Good evening, welcome to Corey Valley Unified Union School District Board Meeting. Please stand, face the flags for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance, so to the flag, states of America, and to the republic over which it stands. One nation, united as one with a shared justice for all.
I'd like to entertain a motion to approval of agenda.
To add something?
Okay.
Under, it's gonna be quick too, it's not, I know the meeting is fast, old business. Um, I've got one thing about, uh, um, making a motion for, um, the cost to run each school and under old business, I've got some quick, just quick questions about the, um, budget, uh, season and about some money that we approve. Um, the forty thousand dollars that we improve. I'd like to have a brief discussion about that.
And that's under new business?
Yeah, so I don't think we've ever discussed it before. And I'll make the motion too.
The only thing is, I don't know how much information we'll be able to provide since it's news, we did not.
Right, it's quick asking and then it can be for next meeting.
Sure, that'd be, that'd be great, so, okay, yup, that'd be perfect, so, there's, you know, I'll write it down and we'll get it ready to go for it.
So basically, it's motions, it will be to, to have, if a motion's made, it would be to have the information delivered for the next following meeting, okay?
And then I'll, I'll ask about the budget discussion and just, you know, brief, brief discussion and then, you know, because I know we're supposed to start.
Okay.
Eric, I, I don't know if this is, um, to break it now, but I think the future meeting team is incorrect on the target agenda, I don't know if we just need to modify that. It says September third.
Right.
Calendars say that the second Thursday would be something like the twelfth or something.
The twelfth.
It is.
The twelfth.
Okay.
It's supposed to be twelfth, yes.
So, so we can just make that change and, and?
You could also make that change.
When we get to it, when we get to it, okay? Okay, um, do I need a motion to?
No, you just need to approve, you just need to hold on.
Just need a, 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 I'd like a, to have a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? If it carries. Okay. General public comments. Hi, can you please, uh, do you have any comments for tonight?
Eric, she'll be later.
Later, oh, that's right, it's on later on the agenda, sorry.
Yes.
Moving on to, uh, consent agenda. Um, a motion to approve the minutes of the July tenth, twenty twenty-four meeting.
Of one, um, thing on the discussion, it said Linda asked that are going to be attached to the minutes, blah, blah, blah. Linda felt it was important that Jay knew how hard the board worked on this. I, I don't think it was, I was asking Jay, I think I was saying that it was just generally that the board had worked very hard on this, uh.
Jay's statement.
On that, yeah, so. I mean, I'm glad.
Correction of what Linda said, it's not what Jay said, it's a correction of what Linda said.
What Linda said, okay.
About Jay.
Yes.
Linda's statement, yeah.
Thank you.
Motion with corrections.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? If there's no further discussion. Motion carries. Okay. Approval of the warrants. Do I have a motion to approve the warrants? All in favor? Opposed? Any discussion? Opposed? Motion carries. Or do I need to go back, Mike? Just to? Yeah.
Fix it next, okay.
Okay, uh, G R C S U Board, um, meeting report. Um, we started working on our, our goals, our yearly goals. Um, that was kind of the, the, the biggest thing, um, that we, we've started putting together those. We also, um, uh, passed our mission statement um, as well. Um, do you have anything to add, Mike? Okay. Moving on.
Yep, there's a vision and a mission, so that's right.
Vision and a mission, sorry, thank you. Uh, moving on to old business. Uh, community use of schools, school facilities discussion. Were, were you gonna bring anything back, Joe?
You have something, I did, you have something that I gave to Chris. It's very simple, do you want me to go ahead, Chris? It's a very simple recommendation, uh, it's raising the, uh, custodial fee from thirty-six dollars an hour up to forty dollars an hour. Consultation with Louis, that seemed to be prudent, we were not charging enough for custodial fee. So taking that from thirty-six to forty dollars an hour. Then, uh, for, uh, facility use going for, uh, doing an hourly rate instead of a, uh, one-time rate of a hundred dollars, do it forty dollars an hour. Uh, which seems to be a little bit more prudent for people maybe coming in for an hour compared to maybe an AA tournament, maybe there for eight hours a day. So, uh, forty dollars an hour, uh, custodial rate and a forty dollar an hour facility use fee. So, eight hours of AU would be almost double, more than double than what you're charging now. But it just seemed to be the easiest way to do it. Uh, there is, you know, a lot of different scenarios out there, what other schools do, but that seemed to be the simplest way and the most bang for the, bang for your buck.
Okay, thank you.
That would be my recommendation, forty and forty.
Thank you.
Yep.
Um, so, do I have a motion? Do I have a motion to approve the new fees for community use of school facilities?
I'll make the motion.
Any discussion?
Was there any, um, talk about minimum, like, like, for example, you know, somebody's like, gonna be there an hour, you know, or, you know, a very, very short time versus sometimes we look at the longer program.
Right now, if somebody came in for an hour, rented the building for an hour, they'd be charged a hundred bucks, this way they won't be charged forty dollars. So it's forty dollars an hour for the custo, for the facility use fee.
I have a.
Then again, the custodial fee only gets charged if custodians are on duty for, uh, beyond their regular workdays. So if something happened, let's say the, an out-of-town sewing club wanted to come in on a Monday night from five to six, the custodians were already there, they're not getting charged that, that custodial fee. But if they came in on Saturday, they would.
Would they still be charged a building fee?
Yeah.
So building fees, there's a minimum building fee regardless?
Forty, forty dollars an hour regardless. Right, right now, they come in for an hour, they're getting charged a hundred dollars.
Right, any exceptions? Any exceptions?
The exceptions would be if they were a, a West Rowland-based organization, they wouldn't be charged at all. They don't charge anybody, if it's fifty percent more of the population coming in is a West Rowland resident, then, then, then the fees are waived completely.
So, so any of our Corey Valley schools, as long as it's from that, that town, it's okay?
Yep.
Okay, or is it from any Corey Valley town to any Corey Valley school?
Well, then, but I hadn't thought of that, I was just thinking of West Rowland residents using the West Rowland school.
Okay.
So, so on, Pulte came in, I, I don't know, that would be a discussion you'd have to have.
Okay.
But that, that was not my consideration.
Okay.
So this proposal is just for the West Rowland schools, which, is that what we're saying?
Corey Valley. So it covers, so like, if Pulte, um, residents were gonna use Pulte High School?
Right.
Then, and so Proctor the same?
Yep.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Should we put that on the next time and talk about?
Do you wanna talk about it?
Well, no, I mean, we should do this, but if maybe in the future, talk about it, like you just said, Pulte comes to West Rowland, that's where Corey Valley, do we let her, we charge her?
But Tom says, that's not enough.
I mean, I'm not even sure what scenario that would really happen, if you're going to voice camp a lot, Pulte, you're gonna go to Pulte.
We, we hear all sorts of scenarios here, I'm finding out, after this, um, under a year of my experience here.
Just though, I mean, custodians are working Saturdays, Sundays, they're getting time off. Yeah, well, that's one of the reasons we, we were not charging enough custodial fee. It was actually, uh, I think we were charging thirty dollars an hour, it's actually was working out, cutting it to thirty-six dollars an hour. So Louis thought raising that up to forty, you don't have to change it for a few years.
Okay. Any further questions, discussion? Um, do I have a motion, what Joe said?
I did the motion.
Okay, a motion's been made. Um, we've already had our discussion, but any further discussion? All in favor?
Right.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Um, yep.
So we've been talking about asking for the cost, uh, how much it costs to run each building. I'd like to make a motion to, um, that we, as a board, uh, each board member get a copy of that by next, um, maybe before the meeting, so we could look at that and to have, um, be able to have a discussion if need be, um, but I'd like to get the cost to run each building.
So can you elaborate on what you mean by run the building, because I think there are a lot of factors.
Oil, heat, um, electricity, I don't know, I, it'd be nice to ask other board members, do you wanna know about what it costs for the?
The whole change, the whole shebang.
The, the IAs, um.
So operating expense?
Operating expenses.
We could provide a, a ballpark number, but to, to nail down a specific number, it might be very difficult because that number varies from month to month, obviously, depending on the, the weather outside and, and variety of factors, so we can, you know, give a ballpark.
Look under last year, this will be all for this.
So I think we have to understand, people have jobs due too, so if we wanna push that back to, say, October or November, possibly, but um, as we're starting this, start of the school year, just sit there and spend time to look at, go back a year and look at month to month and try to, that's asking a lot of work of the business office and other individuals.
I understand that, but I've been asking about this for a very long time.
Specifically, right, the, well, you may have been, but the board hasn't. And I think that's one of the things, I just wanna make sure though, that what we provide for the board is what they want, but all, there are a lot of factors. We did this with Wells Springs and we gave them a ballpark, because understanding that's, you know, with the kids moving in, or, you know, they said just with the temperature, you know, fluctuations of temperature, you know, facility usage, whether it be during the, the fall or the winter, you know, basketball, even events. There are a lot of factors to that, I think we also have to look at, when we bring in the facilities or capital maintenance plans, that West Rowland might have a lot of, a lot more money that has to be put into it for maintenance over the next five years, as opposed to, say, uh, Pulte and Air Proctor. I think, so there, there are a lot of things, so I wanna know how far down the, right, the board wants to go and then how much time is?
See, you need, need to October to provide a very thorough report?
I, I would say a little more time would allow us to, to really start to, you know, go into detail with this, as opposed to just a very surface level ballpark.
And are you saying that we should include, we, you, um, maybe recommend?
Or would like, that's fine, you know, we'll provide that information, but we just need to know how far down you wanna go, because when you said the whole shebang, what does that really mean, because your definition of shebang might be different than someone else's, so.
This would have been nice to know when I was asking almost close to a year ago, and you're just going, yuck, yuck, and you, so we got the.
Tom, you were, I'm sorry, Tom, what was that?
Asking and.
How about, didn't you just finish the year end?
I just want, I was just trying to board about professionalism and, uh, and so, Tom, I understand you're frustrated, but.
I'll, I'm good.
You, uh, you just finished the year in for twenty twenty-three? Could we, um, get those numbers from twenty twenty-three or go back to twenty twenty-two?
Whatever, whatever the pleasure the board is, so.
How does the board feel about that, getting the end of the year report from each school? From, so that we would have something, um, for next meeting. It doesn't have to be perfect.
I don't think the numbers are, the question, I think it's the timing of when we want them is the question.
We've also been talking, and I, like, you know, in the past about, uh, but that was, I was gonna put that on the next one, so I'm not gonna bring it up, but, um, I just think it would be nice to have something for next meeting, you know, even if it's the end of the year, and then we can look at it and say, um, great, thank you. Um, bye, this is a great start. Um, you know, let's, let's add something, let, let's start with something. And then if we need to add more, we can add more in, you know, in October or November, but if we have something to start with, like the end of the year, that, um, I know that you have numbers for the end of the year, maybe we can do that, start with that for, and, and maybe not do twenty twenty-three, what was twenty twenty-two? If, if you have twenty twenty-three, that would be great, because that would give us a, a opportunity to go forward.
But we, we do have maintenance costs coming up as well.
I, so I will.
Right.
Speak with Louis tomorrow, we will begin, so I think what the board is asking for is if we were to close down one building, what would the savings be? You know, so we're looking at a building by building cost, and so if we were to, the board would make a decision to close a school down and depend on what that school would be, what would be, you know, what would be savings to the, the district, just based upon shutting that school down. From an operational standpoint, we're not talking about staffing, because that, that, it's a very complex process, so when you shut a building down, we're looking at, uh, you know, staff that we, you know, we've shifted around, we're looking at, you know, uh, RIFs, uh, seniority, it's just, it's a very complex process, so we can just look at from a operational maintenance standpoint. You know, what we do, that, 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 we'll have that information for you, so the board can then discuss the cost of closing down a school and the savings of that, okay?
And it's, it's just a discussion. It's, you know, it's.
Well, I don't.
Yeah, it's just the big.
You ask for the information, what we do with it is up to you.
We're on the horse again, which I know I missed last month's meeting and I apologize, but two meetings ago, we're talking about what are the breadth of data we would need to look at the financial health of the district projecting into the future, and then what are solutions for addressing problems, right? So, just wanna make sure that that's maybe where we're still at. I don't feel like anything's changed since, yeah.
Yeah, that's where, that's definitely where we're still at, I missed last month's meeting too.
Okay, there may be other data points that we might leave.
Yes, 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 well, which is just a beginning, and, and that's just something that Tom.
Yeah.
For, for a while.
That's a.
It's in the form of a motion, so that means that everybody can say their piece and then we vote on what it is.
Can you restate the motion with Linda?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, for the board to look at the, now, I said up, operational costs of a building to look at maybe twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three of the operational costs of each building in Corey Valley. For next, I, maybe even a couple, well, when we ever get it, we'd get it a little bit before, so we could take a look at it before we come to the meeting.
Okay. So a motion has been made, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Right, moving on to.
Passed by majority.
Let's. That was passed by majority, thank you. Uh, moving on to new business, um, the theater program.
I, I am just here because Joe had told me he couldn't be here, and I'm just here if anybody has any questions for me, basically, and then I'm out of your hair. So I don't know what's been discussed so far, what hasn't been discussed.
Really haven't, do you wanna maybe just describe what you're planning for the, the program?
Sure, so it's for Pulte, um, high school theater program to restart back up. I know it got kinda closed off during COVID, when everything happened. I know that there is a, like, a whole Corey Valley theater program, which is great, but I think it'd be great too to get, you know, Pulte's back up and running, um, I have a lot of alumni from the theater program that is willing to, you know, help out for free and, you know, do, you know, hair, makeup, costuming, you know, we've got a lot of stuff left over that can be reused, so I don't think it's gonna be something that's gonna financially harm the school in any means, um. We were talking about, you know, doing just a smaller play twice a year, you know, nothing humongous, but that's just kind of what we were looking at, and I've sent my resume in, so they should have that upfront here at some point, maybe tomorrow she'll get it, um. You know, I don't know if anybody has questions or.
Is there a cost, is there gonna be a cost to us?
I believe it's already in the budget, from my understanding, that's what I was, I, I understand, but I don't know that, I mean, you know, obviously, we pay, or have people pay to come watch, so it makes money in a sense, I know that there is, I talked to Joe a little bit, they have the lighting and everything still from the past, um, there won't be a cost in terms of somebody coming in to do hair and makeup, because an alum has already said she will come in and absolutely do it. Um, there won't be a cost for somebody to run lights, because again, he's an alum and he runs tech and he said he would absolutely do it. I've got two other alum who said they would be happy to help with costumes and sewing and, you know, anything that's needed there. So, I, I don't think that anything that would be out of budget would be, you know, a lot of local people in Pulte are willing to donate materials, you know, for sets and props, and I know when I was in theater, a lot of the time, we, like, theater cast brought props in ourselves and we just had our names on it and we took it home at the end of the show, and so I, I think there was of something about budget that Joe had said, but I wasn't here for that, so I don't know if that's in the budget or what, uh, my understanding is it is. So, that's why I can't really give you a solid answer on that one. That'd be more Joe's department, I think.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
We don't need a motion or anything, we could just say it's happening. It's okay.
The board typically does a motion on a school program, but I think, I would, if we're gonna make a motion, I would encourage me and the board to table this, just when we have a better understanding of cost, and when Joe could be here to talk a little more about how this is gonna look or how it's gonna operate.
Yeah.
I don't think you could put, uh, you know, restart a program, put a new program, and we just, the majority of the board is concerned about the cost of, of utilities and stuff, so I, I think anything that has to do with cost from, from this point on, we need to to be careful what we're doing, because we can't imply we're concerned about one thing and then not be concerned about everything.
Okay, so, so we will table it, um, for further discussion next month, when Joe can be here, and, um, we'll, we'll let you know.
Sure.
Thank you, guys.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to Visbit proxy. Chris?
Yeah, so each year at the fall meeting, uh, we have the, uh, the V S B A, V S B A Fall Conference, which is the, the, sure, the V S B A uh, annual meeting, the fall meeting will take place virtually on the, either twenty-fourth, well, on twenty-fifth, at the, uh, Fall Conference, Visbit has a meeting, I do believe, Linda, you've, you've been attending these meetings in the past, I've seen your name on the, uh, the minutes and the attendance, uh, but what each district has to do is either select a representative to vote on their behalf, or if no one will be present, they will then have to allow Visbit to vote in, in, uh, on, you know, in proxy on behalf of the, the Corey Valley, so I think what would the board would need to do is make a motion if someone's going to be at the, uh, the Fall Meeting, if they would be willing for that individual then to vote on behalf of Corey Valley.
Okay. Um, so is there a motion?
I'm going, so I, we have to do it. I mean, it's a learning experience of going to these meetings and meeting with all the people that are from Vermont, so you learn as you go, but I'm willing to go and, um, listen and be the proxy of it, so. Even hoping and hoping years passed and trying to get more senators and legislators to come, you know, um, my feeling has always been that, um, if they listen to the superintendents who attend these meetings and know what's going on in their school systems, maybe we would not be in the um, place we are, but, um, you know, I don't know, they're hoping, you know, V S B A is hoping to push to get more people who make the decisions for schools to be at the meeting, so that they can hear some of the, the things that, um, the people are, are trying to deal with, and it's, you know, it always, you know, I know, it always comes back to money, you know, it's coming back to money, or making a decision, last year, there was some discussion about making decisions, but there's no money to back it up, you know, they make a law, but there's no money to back up the, so we're scrambling then to try to to deal with the law, but we don't have any money to back it up with.
I think this discussion was whether we're gonna have, who the proxy was gonna be and that, the, that the philosophy of what.
I know, thank you, Mike, I apologize for talking too much.
Do we have a?
To do the, be the proxy.
Okay, so, so Linda would be happy to, to be the proxy, um, do we have a motion? Okay. So motion's been made.
Wait, the motion?
Rebecca has made the motion.
Been down here, Mike.
Um, um, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Side note, I'm trying to figure out what Visbit stands for, and there was, it doesn't seem.
It's a school boards and insurance trust.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, next item under new, new business is West Rutland School Capital Maintenance Request.
I've included, uh, two bids for the board, one involving, uh, replacing, and I brought this to the board's attention, uh, in May. We have a nineteen seventy-era panel box from Federal Atlantic, uh, that is no longer supported, in fact, we're lucky that we have insurance with that panel box, uh, they went out of business because of how bad they were, it was installed when the gym was built, seventies. Um, we had to pay eleven hundred dollars just for a replacement fuse, uh, breaker. Um, and, uh, I went back, I brought in electrical engineer, who in nineteen ninety-six was at West Rutland School and recommended that that board, that panel be replaced in nineteen ninety-six. I happen to know him and brought him back in in two thousand twenty-four, and he goes, I can't believe I'm looking at this thirty years later, twenty-eight years later, that this had. twenty-eight years later, that this has not been replaced, this needs to be replaced. Uh, we cannot find electricians to work on it. Uh, one guy, uh, who has provided us the bid, uh, helped us out, he's West Rutland alum and helped us out, but it is something that, uh, last year failed, you cannot find these replacement breakers. And it is in both the, the electrician or the electrical engineer and the electrician's uh, professional opinion, these needs to be replaced and ASAP, we're on borrowed time. Uh, last year, we ended up having no power for a couple of hours in the building, which shut internet, phone, everything off when that breaker broke. Um, so he has his bid, which comes in pretty reasonable for what we thought was going to be, it will have to be done on a weekend uh, or during a vacation when we shut the majority of the electricity, there are multiple fuse boxes around our building, but this is the main one that controls essentially all the lighting, the phone, the internet, all the electricity to the old part of the building. Um, and gym.
Okay.
So I provided that, I'd like to be able to access the, the, and this is also, by the way, both of these bids or both of these projects, this and the roofing are on our, um, five-year plan as high priorities, I only have a couple that are high priorities and these are two of them.
Okay.
Um, the second one is from Premier Roofing, he does a lot of work down at Polton, uh, being highly recommended. Um, we have, uh, leaks all over the place in our building, um, most of which we found have been caused because the main drains up the roof are plucked. So the water builds up and then looks for the, we, you know, we know water is insidious. Um, and he gives a detailed bid of what that would look like, uh, for the work. And we'd like to be able to get both of these done. Uh, the roofing ASAP, as there's a backup and the electrical, Mr. uh, Reset told me it's gonna take a couple of months just to get the electrical supplies that he needs uh, to do this project, so the earlier that we can get this stuff um, on his schedule, parts can be ordered, et cetera, so these are both prudent projects of the maintenance of the building, uh, that, um, need to be done.
Okay.
So I'm requesting money from the building fund to, uh, to pay for these. Because if not, it would take over, over literally fifty percent of my maintenance budget to pay.
Okay. And what are the total costs for each?
Um, yep, they are in the, uh, sorry, my computer's went. Uh, we have a bid of twenty-one thousand four hundred and fifty-two dollars, twenty-five cents for the electrical.
Okay.
We're expecting it to be closer to thirty. Um, and, uh, the roofing, uh, he says twenty-five to thirty-five, it depends on um, exactly what he gets when he gets in there, we have a lot of seams that are separating, actually, the good news, because there is good news to all of us. The good news is that the roof is in very good shape. Um, despite what era of the roof is, the roof is actually in really good shape. Uh, so it is cleaning up some seams and cleaning these, these major drains, which are like six-inch drains, cleaning them out all the way down so we can get some water, because we've got, you know, discolored ceiling tiles all over the place, we don't want to be, we replace them and they discolor, so we stop doing it. Uh, it, it's, it's unsightly, they need to be replaced, but I, I don't want to do it until I get these drains cleaned.
Okay.
And the rest of the roof, last year during, uh, the, the glossy turn, we had buckets all over the place, um, in the gym. Um, so we really need to, you actually.
Witness that, yes, I do.
So, um, we need to get these things cleaned up.
Okay.
Alright, so two, two requests.
So we'll make a motion that we, um, allow um, these two, um, projects to go ahead, because it just seems like we have to do that to keep kids safe in this world. And, you know, it sounds like it has to be done.
Dry.
Making a motion.
Okay, um, a motion's been made, any discussion?
That would be out of the capital maintenance fund.
Yes. Capital maintenance fund. On the, uh, electricians.
That's, yeah.
Birds. Um, there's a, there's a couple of lines, right, so, but there's an assumption that all existing wires that we're gonna use, no one's gonna install. And then you know, the motor starters, and excluding the alarm patients, we provided on circuit size grades, and do we, anyway, so the question there is given that, do we think that this, the, the total might change?
Depending upon those motor starters, Mr. Reset and I have been trying to get him to come back. He's been very good to us, no, no ill will getting him to come back, I had to figure out what were the motor starters, I mean, I'm pretty up on building, I mean, I've done this long enough that I'm pretty good about that. Um, and they are, there are some nineteen sixty-era motor starters down in the furnace room that he has reburned. Uh, that he would like to change over also.
So that might be in addition.
Yes. They're made by Stuart Baker or Ed Soler?
It is, um, my last building still had knob and tube when we did a major electrical upgrade and that was just in Rutland about ten years ago. We at least don't have knob and tube, but we're not far off.
The breakers aren't attached to slate, are they? Okay, so we're, we're, we moved that far ahead anyways.
It's just amazing, because these things are out of sight, out of mind, when we talk about electrical and roofing, that's, that's not sexy, that's not anything you see, but we all know from home, being homeowners, you're not, you can't run a building without them.
Do we know when the last time this was sort of looked at, Jay, this particular?
Nineteen ninety-six.
Ninety-six, and you know if there's any work done on that last? You don't.
By the volume of dust that is down there, it's been a while.
I was, I'm sorry, I was talking about the roof, when was the last time?
Oh, the roof, uh, well, we have an annual maintenance each year. Um, but, uh, it was, it was Premier who told us about the drains and came in with, with, again, when you use the same contractor all the time, I think bringing someone in with new eyes um, uh, brought up some things that needed to be adjusted.
That's why I was wondering, when was the last time that that was looked at, suggestions were made and what did?
Um, last, it's all been, I hate to say it, it's been all just uh, triage work, so each year we have someone come in in the fall, getting ready for winter to come in, a, a different vendor. Um, and so we plug holes, do small patches. But what we're discovering is that there needs to be some considerable seam sealing. And then the roofs are good, but they're not, there's no suggestion of replacing the roofs. They're in really good shape except. Again, different set of eyes.
You know why the drains have been so original installed?
So it's on the part of the building. Yeah, the outside, we have three different, yeah, the three different roofs that are three different generations, so.
A lot of it is the, well, the gym roof from ninety-six.
Yeah.
Is
that, that's been, that's placed. It's like that, yeah, yeah.
Just for reference, we have made about eight hundred and forty thousand dollars in our capital maintenance fund, right?
But when you have to do something, you have to do it.
Yeah, you do. I mean, really, you have to.
Okay, any further discussion, questions? Okay, all in favor?
Right.
Bye.
Bye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Yeah, yep.
Um, next is me also, so I'll just get to it if that's okay?
Okay.
So, um, okay, um, sorry.
That's okay.
Um, so, uh, West Rutland School Choice Discussion. So in July, it was brought to my attention that a student who had been at our school as an eighth grader, seventh and eighth grader on School Choice from Mount Holly um, had been moved, and how this was discovered was that when the business office billed Mount Holly, they said that student doesn't live in our district anymore, they've moved. So that led us to figuring out what has, what has happened. So Ms. Savini is joining me tonight, um, it is, it is her child, uh, who goes to our school, she had called in either February or March, if that's correct.
Yeah.
Said that we have moved.
Yeah.
And what else do I need to do? And was told by the office, no, you're good, we'll put it in the system. Well, it, it, it's more than just changing an address in the system, this was a student on School Choice. We, we get parents who call every other week with movement, with, you know, we've moved, change of address. Um, with different living situations, with split custodies, schools deal with this on a regular basis. The office never brought it to Mr. Harrington for my attention, that this had happened. Um, and it's water over the dam, and had it happened, um, I would have had Ms. Savini, um, register her student, well, we would have been able to come to the board and ask for the board to allow her to stay um, through the end of twenty twenty-four. Okay, so this was, again, it was in our February or March of this year. This was never caught and brought to our attention until July.
And at that time, when we would have come to the board to allow her to stay for the year, whatever decision came out of that, we would have put, would have had her at that time when the, uh, School Choice came up again, which comes up in, uh, April and ends in May, she would have gone on our School Choice list for next year. That never occurred.
Hmm.
So tough situation.
Yes.
But it is not for School Choice.
This was not really, this, this was Mount Holly who does not have a school, so when we talk about the traditional School Choice, yes.
Oh, well, okay, yeah.
Mount Holly does not have a homeschool, so they have choice to send their kids wherever they want because there is no school in Mount Holly anymore.
Correct.
They chose from Mount Holly to send their daughter to West Rutland, so is that the typical nine to twelve School Choice program?
Okay.
So when they moved to Fairhaven, you know, there, there's that kind of that, just Castleton, I'm sorry, moved to Castleton, um, when they gave us the address, nobody thought to think, well, it's a Mount Holly student who is here on, under that situation, so.
So I have, uh, I've apologized to Ms. Savini, yeah, immensely. Uh, because her stu-, her child was not able to register for School Choice, what Ms. Savini has done is, per my request, is she has registered her child at, at Fairhaven, which is the school um, where Castleton students live. And she is here tonight, now we, we have a waiting list to get into West Rutland School, if you remember the last board meeting or two board meetings ago, there was, we talked about School Choice point of it. Um, our School Choice is already at tech, which is what the board sets for in and out for all Corey Valley schools, we have another five or six people on our waiting list. Um, so I, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I would, I'm, we're requesting that the board, um, allow this student to continue at West Rutland, which would make an eleventh student, that's mom's request. Um, I can't, we can put words in their mouth, so correct me if I'm wrong.
No, absolutely.
I'm requesting that and I am, it, it really comes down to the board's decision.
You're requesting on behalf of?
Yes, I'm requesting on behalf of mom, um, trying to not use the student's name. Requesting, um, for Ms. Savini and her child that she, uh, be able to, she's done what she's needed to do, which is to register at Fairhaven. She's told them that I would like School Choice to West Rutland, but there is no slot for her child at this time.
So we need to create a, a slot?
That's.
Is that what you're saying?
Well, it's the board's decision, I, I, I told mom that I would, my, my, my ask is that there would become an eleventh, but you're, that is up to the board to decide, Chris made it very clear to me, that is board decision, it's nothing he could um, ask for, Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, that I'm.
No, board.
Making sure I get this right.
Said where a board sets the, the number of, um, sorry, just. Uh, the board sets the number of students who can, uh, School Choice in, School Choice out, and set the number as ten, uh, so we are locked into that, the board would be the only group that could revise that number, you have to go back into their motion, uh, we do, you know, we also look at the admission of non-resident students, which we, the board has also had to consider a few cases last year, which in this case, um, this family would be considered as non-residents. Um, so therefore, uh, the choice would either be to, the board would either A, accept tuition payments on behalf of this or would waive the tuition, that would be the choice the board could have, allow the student to.
How long has she been a student in West Rutland? How long, how long?
Years.
And this, what, what grade are we going into?
Ninth grade. Pretty major year. I also, um, contacted the school in, I believe it was April to double check to make sure that everything was okay with my address, that it had been updated, and also if everything was all set. And I was told that it was. Again, not knowing there was a School Choice application, because in Mount Holly, you just go.
Right.
Right.
So I,
Okay.
As for my ignorance and not knowing that at a new school, that I would have had to have applied.
Okay. Why?
So I had to go back to my office staff and remind them that if anybody calls with an address change, it needs to be brought to Mr. Harrington and my attention. So we're aware of it, there's a process that failed.
Protocol.
There's a protocol that was not followed.
So my question would be, if, if this, if it was granted, would that mean that the student would automatically qualify for next, the tenth grade and the eleventh grade and the twelfth grade, or?
What's your School Choice, and you're there? I mean, it's a, yes.
Would we have, well, would we have any issues with any of the families that are waiting? And, and queued in the line?
I, I, I couldn't speak to that, I'm sorry, I'm.
Okay, that's okay. And.
Not talking necessarily about expanding to the slots for the whole entire rest of this particular student's career, would we reduce the number of slots open or available, I don't know, does that?
The question might be.
Like a one-time exception to it. Right, but that, right, so, but then the next year, you'd only have a seven, would you only have nine available slots or is that not how it works?
Depending on who graduates, who's a school.
So it's, it's a flexible number anyway, yes, flexible.
Yeah.
Of which I would absolutely be first on race day, putting in my School Choice application for her each and second. Make sure that she finished where she was, because she is an extreme introvert, as am I, so being her is difficult. Um, so, and moving her would be very hard. Um, she has, you can ask her teachers, she has progressed well, and even just in the last conference, they said she continues to open um, and become more vocal and participate more, so moving somebody like her in the last hour to a completely different school district, which would be a high school separate from a nice small school like West Rutland, uh, could be very difficult. So I ask that you please allow her to stay.
Okay.
That absolutely, if I had known what my role was, would have done what I was supposed to have done to make sure. You know, if I had had to have been here in the spring, I would have been here.
It was a unique situation that we haven't come across before.
What, why, why do we, why do we only hold? Why do we only open it up to ten students?
Because there's a certain percentage that we can only go towards.
Okay, so that's, that's a.
Close to that percentage, yes.
Are we on, we're so, but we're under it?
I'd have to look at the exact number, in fact.
Okay. Okay. And the state sets that percentage, Chris? Okay.
If that a piece of information we need before meeting.
Yeah, I sound.
I didn't understand this, the unique situation, I would just encourage the board to consider precedent setting, you know, because we're gonna have many unique situations come across our desk around School Choice, submission of non-resident students, you know, uh, I, I, you know, I've spoken with Jay about this at length, about the, this should have been resolved last spring, um, but bring here, but I think we, the board has to seriously consider the consequences of this decision, you know, just in looking at, not just this, but also, uh, moving forward. So. So. Because even if you open it to eleven, the question really is around that waitlist, you still have other individual on that waitlist. Uh would you have to then do, redo a lottery, we'd have to look to see what that would consist of. Um you know, to then open up a, the eleventh after, we have to look at statutory language. Will that be a violation of statutes around School Choice?
So we need, we need to, to gather information on this before we can make a decision.
So are we gonna have a decision before the school year starts, though?
Three weeks.
Yeah.
I feel like that's something you have to decide. Soon.
Good, we re- reach out to legal and the board could have a special meeting to. It would be the.
Do we need a, a motion for that? To reach out to legal and have a special meeting?
That's what they want to do.
We have to do that.
Yeah.
A lot of things you just brought up, we don't have all the information that we need in order to make. A good decision, so I would say it has to be a special meeting. And have to have it would be for school starts.
Okay.
Oh, I will make a motion that we hold until we get all the information that we need to make. A just, a, a good decision, or, or a decision based on. Some information that Chris will get from legal and we will need to have another meeting.
Two special meetings, okay.
Um there is three weeks until school starts.
I know. I know, I just have a question, I may have missed this, um in the, in the protocol. They would have had to reapply in April without a guarantee of getting a spot.
With, yes, when the residency moved to, from Mount Holly to Castleton. Had I known that, I would have had to go to Chris to ask for permission for her to continue.
Right.
At West Rutland at that point in time.
For this. Then they would have had, right, and then they would have had to apply in April, but it wouldn't have been guaranteed that they're gonna keep that spot, okay.
And, and how do you decide, decide that usually? It's, so it's a lottery, so you're pulling, pulling names out of the hat, kinda?
You have slots, then there's a, a lottery.
And that's per statute, stay up.
Okay.
How long has she attended West Rutland School?
Years.
How is that lottery done?
Literally is, you write the names on a piece of paper, you put it in the hat, you end up in a public setting and you draw names.
Okay.
We have other students who fall into that, and would fall into that lottery category right now.
Yes. Give a motions.
Okay, s- so motion's been made, um any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Will, um.
Do you want to set a date for the special meeting?
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
I haven't even put it, I didn't put.
When does school start, Jay?
Starts uh Wednesday, August thirty, twenty eighth.
Yeah.
That's on there.
Chris, when can you have everything ready, dude?
I think it'd be better off just having the board set a date, no. Just.
How about?
You can do it.
Yeah.
No, the new opening law, we have to.
Warning time.
Yeah.
You have a warning, you have a warning.
Twenty four hours.
Right.
Our special meeting, so but.
So give us some dates that to warn.
How about, how about the, what's, what's that thing? Does anybody have any suggestions on dates?
I think this is a week. Enough time, do you think, of to?
So, uh. It really just depends on conversation with, with our attorney. And I, I think. Okay, I maybe have an answer by the end of tomorrow, I mean, maybe a very quick answer, to be honest. About this, so.
We say like Tuesday, then, to me. I feel like we least owe them.
Yeah.
A quick and swift, you know, if the answer from the attorney is that we can't do it, then.
Right, there. I mean, I'm going to ask the attorney about. What are the options for the board to, to reconsider the School Choice slots? That they established back in February.
Right.
And then. If one, the board can make that change. Then we also have to look at the lottery system, you know, cause we have a waitlist. So with, then we have to then redo lottery for that one slot that's available, which.
Uh if we're doing it for one school, would we have to redo it for all?
Would have to have, it would be, we, because the, we. Motion was for ten in town for all Corey Valley schools.
Right.
So we would then make a motion for eleven for all Corey Valley schools, which. I don't, I don't know offhand with Holley or Proctor, what their.
But I'm just saying.
School Choice, so if they.
Yeah.
Had that as well.
And it has to be individual high school, it's not Corey Valley as a, as a whole.
We, we make a motion as Corey Valley corrupts. For our schools.
Sorry, I'm gonna ask the, spelling out of the implications of redoing lottery, might be some students who were told that they could go already, might, that might be thrown up in the air. Or is no.
There are students who are on the waitlist.
We're on the waitlist.
Any student who receives spots, has a spot.
Yeah.
But if, if they have, say, five students on the waitlist. Then, and I don't know what, you know, but we may, if we reopen the, the eleven spots, those five students would have access to that spot. Just as this family would, regardless of circumstances.
Okay, yeah, yeah, same here.
If this had been addressed, would she have been a guaranteed?
So.
No.
So it is, is Jay upstairs, so. What should have happened was that the minute that school was notified of a change in address. Um. The administration should have been notified, and then they would have let me know, is, look at a policy, anything that occurs. Prior to spring break, needs board approval, so a family would move prior to spring break. I don't have the authority to sit there and say, yes, they could finish out the school year. That has come before the board, this would have been qualified, as we've had to do in, in other situations. Where we brought this to, you know, to the board, to say this family has moved to Castleton, uh that, you know, we, you know. For educational reasons, you know, we would like for them to finish the year, and then. We then would then have explained to them their options for next year, if they want to continue, which would have been School Choice, and then they would have entered the lottery. With other students and, and I don't know, but if there was. You know, more than, you know, one spot available, there are more than one, there's a, you know, likely that they may not have received in that spot at that time. So. So, I mean, I, I know it is, honestly, it is unfortunate. But we also look at, we do have policy in place around admission of non-resident students. And we, you know, the board, I just refreshed me, last year, we've had a, two very difficult decisions. Around families who also had some very unique circumstances, so it just, you know. Uh that we just have to make sure that whatever the board decides, just we have to weigh out the consequences, also the precedent that we, that we set moving forward. So.
Yeah.
So if we wanna schedule even something for next week. Um I, I think out of fairness to this family. The sooner we can provide them resolution with either yes or a no, the better, um to them as, you're dragging this out, so.
How about the thirteenth or the fourteenth?
Uh I, I.
That'd be Tuesday or Wednesday.
So.
Can't do it?
I can't.
Okay. Alright, how?
I, I have four meetings both nights, but it doesn't mean that.
Well, maybe we could do it at four o'clock.
If we do it earlier, yes.
Four o'clock, either day.
Yes, four o'clock either day would work.
And as long as we can sign on virtually, some of us, I think.
Right, and I'm even, at four o'clock, I can, you'd be here in person too.
You need to have one person in person. Why don't we, I, I'm, my vote's for the thirteenth, but. Okay. Me.
I'm better than the thirteenth than the fourteenth.
Anybody, is the third, at four o'clock, virtual or in person, however? Okay.